Commissioners meetings for May 12th of 2015. We're glad you're with us this morning. Before we call our meeting officially to order, we'd like to present the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation this morning will be given by Dr. Caleb Colley from Macklin Road Church of Christ. That'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance led by firefighter Day, who has been with Cobb County Fire since July of 2008. He is assigned to Station 20, C shift. For those that wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Dear Father in heaven, we're so thankful for this day that you've given us, and we're thankful for Cobb County. We're thankful for the security that it provides to us and the opportunity for a wonderful place to live and work. And we're thankful for this commission, and we ask for your blessing upon it. We're thankful that you have instituted government for the sake of protecting us and helping us in various ways during our lives. We ask that you will help this commission to make those decisions that are most beneficial for the citizens of Cobb County, that they will operate upon principles of justice and fairness, and that thy will will be done in all things. And we're thankful most of all for thy son, Jesus Christ, and it's in his name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you, doctor, and thank you firefighter Day for being with us today. And I'll call this meeting officially to order of May 12th, 2015. First tab is presentations, and we have one. I'd like to invite Kelly Cooper, the local leader of West Cobb, to please come forward. Who's Kelly?
Keely Cooper.
Pardon me? Keely, I'm sorry. If that's what it says, and I read it wrong, I'm sorry. And who's with you today?
This is Rowan. Can you say Rowan Cooper?
Will Cooper.
Will Garbers.
Debbie Garbers.
Debbie, good to come. Glad you're here. We're here today to present one item, a proclamation concerning food allergies awareness week. Food allergies affect approximately 15 million Americans, including 6 million children. There is no cure for food allergies. Strict avoidance is the only way to prevent a food allergy reaction, and serious reactions require immediate medical treatment and can be fatal if not treated properly. Eating away from the home can pose a significant risk to people affected by food allergies. Research suggests that close to half of fatal food allergy restrictions or reactions are triggered by food served by the restaurant or other food service establishments. Food Allergy Kids of Atlanta is dedicated to educating the general public, schools, and restaurants in Georgia communities about life-threatening allergic reactions, risk management procedures, and how to enact an emergency action plan. We, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 10 through 16 as Food Allergy Awareness Week in Cobb County, and encourage all residents to learn the dangers of food allergies and how to successfully manage them to promote a safety, safer, healthier community. And we'd like to present you with this proclamation and ask for comments.
On behalf of the Food Allergy Kids of Atlanta, thank you.
Oh.
Thank you. Now talk. Oh. On behalf of the Food Allergy Kids of Atlanta, we would like to thank you all.
Thank you very much. I would encourage commissioners to put this in your newsletter this week, get the word out. This takes us to tab two, our first public comment period. Ms. Benson.
There is one speaker, Hilda Hatsel. If you come forward, please.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Hilda Hatsel, and I'm a scientist with 25 years of experience in water issues. I live in Brookhaven subdivision. I would like to start by thanking Cobb County for building the Chastain Meadows Regional Stormwater Management Facility, which was completed in July 2011. In the past, it has provided sufficient flood protection to residents living downstream. For reference, the flood control structure is located on Noonday Creek and is shown in the slide with black arrow. Noonday Creek is shown in green. One of the functions of this structure is to control flooding on Noonday Creek by detaining peak stormwater runoff. For the period from 2011 to late 2013, no flooding events were recorded at the USGS gauge at Hawkins Store Road. However, starting in late 2013, episodes of flooding in Noonday Creek below the flood control structure have begun to occur more frequently. In light of the increased occurrences of flooding, I am concerned about the effects of allowing construction projects along Noonday Creek to pay a fee in lieu of constructing an onsite stormwater management structure as described in ordinance 50-128. Without these structures, peak stormwater discharge is not detained onsite during rainfall events and may contribute to increased flooding downstream. Of special concern is the granting of fee in lieu of detention status to projects that discharge the Noonday Creek upstream of the flood control structure. Town Village, which is labeled Z-73 and Z-26 on the upper side of the slide, was granted the status fee in lieu of construction on an onsite, excuse me, fee in lieu of constructing an onsite detention structure. Town Village covers 50 acres. Construction began in early 2014. Peak stormwater from the project runs off the site into three or more culverts that pass under the Noonday Creek multi-use trail. From there, stormwater discharges directly into Noonday Creek above the flood control Hydrographs for the USGS gauge on Noonday Creek at Hawkins Store Road, which is about two and a half miles downstream of the flood control structure, suggest that flooding events on Noonday Creek are increasing. The red line represents the value at which flooding occurs at the gauge. As you can see, from January 2011 through December 2012, no flooding occurred at the When we look at the hydrograph from the start of January 2013 through April 2015, there is one instance of near flooding and two instances in which flooding occurs at the gauge. When compared to the 2011-2012 period, the number of flooding and near flooding events is greater for the period from January 2013 to the present. It is interesting to note that 2003 was a wet year with more than 16 inches of rainfall beyond the 30-year yearly average, whereas rainfall in 2014 was near normal. To help explain the increase in flooding events, we looked at possible influences on flooding from projects under construction. Based on the Cobb County mapper and Google Maps, Town Village is the only major project currently under construction in the Noonday Creek watershed upstream of the USGS gauge at Hawkins Creek. The increased occurrences of flooding seem to coincide with the site clearing and initiation of construction for Town Village, which began in early 2014. As the site continues to be developed and more impervious surface occurs, there is a likelihood that the instances of flooding will increase. Z-83, which is located in the center of the slide, is another project upstream of the flood control structure. It also has been approved for payment in fee of lieu of constructing an onsite stormwater management structure. The project will cover 19 acres and just discharge directly into the flood control structure, thus adding even more stormwater runoff during peak flows. In conclusion, projects that are granted fee in lieu of constructing an onsite stormwater management structure and are upstream of the flood control structure contribute additional stormwater runoff to the structure during peak discharges. These stormwater contributions are likely affecting the flood control structure's capability to control peak stormwater discharges. This can result in increased flooding downstream. The projects that are granted fee in lieu of detention downstream of the dam will also add stormwater runoff during peak charge and add to the likelihood of flooding residents downstream. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, doctor, if you wouldn't mind giving your contact information to my assistant, Camilla Rogers, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly.
She's over here raising her hand. Thank you. Any other speakers? It takes us to tab three, our consent items. That's consent agenda. There are two items, item nine and item 10, that we are going to take independently of the consent agenda immediately following our consideration of the consent agenda. With that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county persons recognizing items nine and 10 are being pulled for an individual vote. Is there a second, Commissioner? Any comments? Call a question? The vote is four zero. I'd like to note for the record that Commissioner Cupid is out of state today and will not be part of our meeting. So with that, I'd like to call up Director Damasimo to present items nine and 10 to us. Director?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Agenda item number nine on consent is to approve a contract with Clever Devices for upgrade to the current Cobb Community Transit Automatic Vehicle Location System platform. An automatic vehicle location, ABL, system calculates the real-time location of any vehicle equipped with a global positioning satellite GPS receiver. Data is then transmitted to a central location through cellular communications and can be accessed immediately or archived for further analysis. On September 27th, 2011, the Board of Commissioners approved a contract with Digital Recorders for the purchase and installation of an ABL system for Cobb Community Transit. On May 14th, 2013, the Board approved supplemental agreement number one with Clever Devices Limited successor in interest to Digital Recorders, Inc. for the modification of CCT's ABL system data files to support web-based trip planning tools for transit patrons. The department has been notified by Clever Devices that CCT's current onboard ABL equipment was discontinued by the manufacturer in late 2014. Therefore, no further development or upgrade to the existing DR-600 platform is planned, and system support for this platform will end in 2019. To facilitate the transition to the new DR-700 technology platform, the manufacturer is offering a credit for existing equipment. Some of the advantages of this new state-of-the-art technology, which are not currently available, are a mobile application for customers, bus time, one login for all onboard technology, a four-port router that will provide Wi-Fi capability for customers and for the bus camera security system, clever reports, a robust reporting tool with intuitive graphics to improve operational efficiencies and monitoring of key performance indicators, remote hosting of software applications on servers provided and managed by Clever Devices, database management services for five years to perform service change updates for new service, changes in service, holiday schedules, et cetera, and a five-year hardware-software warranty. Additionally, the GPS map utilized for pair of transit service and flex route service will be updated to the latest version. The department recommends proceeding with an upgrade of the onboard technology for the current ABL system, the voice enunciation system, and the automatic passenger counting APC system for 42 CCT buses that have not met their useful life. An agenda item to procure replacement vehicles in FY15 for the remaining buses in our fleet that have met or exceeded their useful life is being presented to the Board in the next agenda item. These replacement buses will be upgraded with the ABL onboard technology. The Commissioners had received some information and some questions particularly related to another potential vendor. The comparisons that were offered, we've had conversations with you to provide an apples-to-apples comparison of that information versus Clever Devices. Again, this is a current, this was, Clever Devices was made under a competitive procurement process that the Board authorized, and that contract extends through 2019, as has been stated in the agenda item. We would recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Clever Devices Limited in an amount not to exceed $2,825,962 to upgrade the current Cobb Community Transit Automated Vehicle Location ABL System platform, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents. And I'll also mention with regard to that funding that the FTA grant funding will provide 80% of that, and the required 20% local match of $565,192 is available in the Transit Capital Projects Fund budget.
Thank you very much, Director. For the purpose of discussion, I will go ahead and make a recommendation that we approve this item as presented by staff and recommendation. Is there a second? Second, multiple seconds? Are there any comments? There's a comment of Commissioner Oat, evidently.
I just want to thank Ms. Damasimo and her staff for the efforts yesterday, and I think it's important. You kind of briefly mentioned it, but we did, the Commissioners did receive some information from another vendor, and when you did the comparison, like you said, apples-to-apples, their costs were actually a little bit higher than what Clever is giving us. And also, I think the important thing to note, too, is that Gwinnett allowed their system to basically move outside of its useful life, which then it's going to cost them about twice as much as what this contract is to update their system with a smaller fleet. So, thank you for the efforts yesterday.
Commissioner, one of the things that we've mentioned, too, that you had asked us about yesterday is, you know, the Clever Devices, to your point about Gwinnett's situation also, is we're getting about a half a million dollar credit towards the new equipment, so.
Commissioner Bro.
Yes. And also, I just wanted to clarify that this is an upgrade and really, I guess, an expansion of an existing contract with Clever.
That's correct, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Call a question. The motion carries four zero. Item 10, please.
Next item is to authorize the procurement of 35 local fixed route transit buses for Cobb Community Transit through the Athens-Clark County Heavy Duty Transit Bus Consortium Contract with Gillick LLC. Cobb Community Transit, CCT, utilizes a fleet, currently utilizes a fleet of 44 buses to deliver transit service on seven local fixed routes. Weekday operations of these local routes require a total of 7,228 and a half revenue miles per day, while Saturday operations require a total of 3,880.2 revenue miles per day. The age of this fleet ranges from model year 2002 to 2010. Replacement of these buses will be phased over a four-year period. On March 11th, 2014, the Board of Commissioners authorized the implementation of the new Route 25 transit service. This route will serve multiple areas of Cobb by connecting Cumberland Transfer Center passengers to the Marta HE Home Station via Cobb Hospital. Route 25 will require the addition of four transit buses to provide this local fixed route service. On April 21st, 2014, Athens-Clark County Government issued the Heavy Duty Transit Bus Consortium Request for Proposals Number 00680, which included CCT as a named procurement member on this project. One of the things that the Commissioners will note is that we did submit to your revised agenda item, the additional information that we provided particular of this is that FTA encourages recipients to use joint procurements, particularly among smaller transit agencies. And by selecting this option, CCT was able to obtain better pricing by combining requirements into larger joint procurements. Piggyback procurements that some of the Commissioners may have seen that were done in the past are no longer allowed by FTA, but consortium bids such as this are in fact allowed and give us that ability to obtain the most competitive pricing by participating in a larger order. Accordingly, CCT was able to satisfy requirements regarding joint procurements and piggybacking set forth in FTA's Common Grant Rule 49 CFR Part 18 and FTA Circular 4220.1F. A combined financial, technical, and environmental analysis was completed based on performance information provided by the bus manufacturer, recent research data available from the Federal Transit Administration, and information from other sources. Results were used to evaluate and compare various capital, operational, and environmental benefits, including the ability to service and maintain future bus procurements utilizing available maintenance facilities. The limitations of having only two service bays equipped with the necessary safety, monitoring, and fresh air circulation equipment required for working on CNG buses was a significant factor in developing the technology replacement schedule. The lifecycle cost analysis supported the selection of CNG buses, although the initial cost for a CNG bus is higher than for a clean diesel bus. Current analysis showing approximate savings of $64,000 per bus over its service life. However, the existing availability of only two maintenance bays in the current facility precludes ordering a greater quantity than what is currently being serviced. As a part of the comprehensive operations analysis and asset management plan underway now, CCT is developing a plan that will look at migration of the facility for a greater quantity of CNG buses by expanding the capacity of the current facility to maintenance CNG and electric bus technology. Various scenarios were considered in the approach of replacing existing clean diesel buses with new clean diesel buses and existing CNG buses with new CNG buses was identified as the best model. There was a question I know that was asked by an individual of one of the Commissioners about the numbers of the buses. We have assigned rights under this procurement, this consortium procurement, for up to 74 buses, so it was based upon a forecast model, but we don't have to, we will only exercise what is needed. The Department recommends replacement of 31 local fixed route buses that have met and/or exceeded the FTA lifecycle criteria for transit bus replacement. Replacement of these vehicles will enhance the reliability of daily operations, service delivery, customer service, safety, and management of CCT, as well as reduce ongoing maintenance costs associated with the older buses. Replacement vehicles will include 29 Gillick 40-foot low-floor clean diesel buses at a cost of $549,898 each, and two Gillick 40-foot low-floor compressed natural gas buses at a cost of $590,666 each. Additionally, the Department recommends the procurement of four new buses required to operate the Route 25 local fixed route service. Service on this route will be provided with four new Gillick 40-foot low-floor clean diesel buses at a cost of $549,898 each. Existing FTA grants, as previously approved and appropriated by the Board, include funding for procurement of both new and replacement transit buses. Available FTA grant funding will provide 80% of the total $19,327,966 cost, or $15,462,373. The required 20% local match, or $3,865,593, is available in the approved Transit Capital Projects Fund budget. We want to also point out that FTA requires an onsite bus inspector when you're procuring more than 10 buses at a time, and we will be bringing forward an agenda item to award that contract. It'll be presented to the Board at a future date. So we request that the Board of Commissioners authorize the procurement of 31 local fixed route replacement transit buses and four new local fixed route transit buses in an amount not to exceed $19,327,966 for Cobb Community Transit, utilizing the Athens-Clark County Heavy Duty Transit Bus Consortium Contract with Gillick LLC, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions. And one final comment, as the Board may know from our conversations with you all, the replacement schedule for these vehicles really should have started occurring in 2011. We all know where we were in 2011. We were dealing with a severe economic condition and budget cuts and even elimination of routes that just precluded us being able to maintain the schedule of replacement vehicles that normally we would. This gets us back on track, but does it in a very doable phased approach, but really gets us back into a situation where we will have buses that are operating at a peak efficiency and at the lowest possible maintenance cost as a part of our fleet. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Commissioners, I'll bring forward the recommended motion as presented by the Director for approval. Is there a second? Is multiple seconds? There's one comment I want to make. We are the number two, the largest, second-largest transit operator in the state of Georgia, and transit will be a part, is a part of our existing DNA as it relates to providing alternatives to the automobile across the county. And we are consciously looking at ways to try to take advantage of transit where it's appropriate, and will continue to do so. And I want to applaud you and, what's her name?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Gail, the lady that quit on us. I want to compliment you and her for keeping on top of moving this forward. We need to continue to do this and be aggressive in our fleet and making sure that we're providing the best we possibly can, so I applaud, what's her name again? Gail for coming forward, for bringing this forward for our consideration. Commissioner Oat.
Once again, I just want to thank you and your staff and Gail for the information yesterday and bringing all this forward. I was very happy to see, when we talked about the lifecycle costs, that you had already looked at the fact that even though the CNG buses cost more to buy over the life of the buses, they were less costly to operate, and that you had started working into your operational assessment, transitioning the service bays over. So thank you for all the efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
No, I didn't call a question. I'm still asking for comments.
I would just like to ask, if you would state for the public what we're going to do with the retiring buses, there would be some residual income there.
Just because you're getting up there in age doesn't mean that they're going to treat the buses the same way.
I wish I could retire.
They can be, they'll be surplus, sir, but one of the things that we did is, I know you had a specific recommendation for us to consider the potential donation of a bus that might be utilized by some of the technical skills as a part of their ongoing training and so forth, and we're looking into that.
Great. Thank you.
I have moments.
Good idea. Good idea. Any other comments? Call a question? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes tab three, and for those folks at home that desire to do so, the consent agenda will be itemized at completion of this meeting. It takes us to tab four, transportation. Director?
Yes, sir. Agenda item number one is to approve a contract with WE Contracting Company, Inc. for drainage system repairs on South Cobb Industrial Boulevard. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2011 SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with WE Contracting Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $178,593 for drainage system repairs on South Cobb Industrial Boulevard, Project Number E2590, MIS contract number 000878, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Oat.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question? Motion carries four zero. Item two, please.
To approve the concept plan for the design of landscape improvements to Walker Drive Extension to be known as Mabelton Town Square, Project Number E6100A. Walker Drive Extension is an approved project in the roadway safety and operational improvements component of the 2011 SLOSS Transportation Improvements Program. The project consists of extending Walker Drive from Old Floyd Road to Church Street and creating a town square near the entrance to Mabelton Elementary School. A portion of Walker Drive will be renamed Mabelton Town Square as a result of this project. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve the concept plan for the design of landscape improvements to Walker Drive Extension to be known as Mabelton Town Square, Project Number E6100A, and authorize the Department to proceed with the project.
Thank you. This, Commissioner Cupid's not here, and it's in her district, but the Mabelton Community, Community Comm Dev and DOT, and it's just been a wonderful cooperation. ARC, everyone's been involved to reshape the Mabelton community, and I think this is a step towards that end. The school system was involved. So this is a great item that we're working on here, Commissioners, and I recommend we approve the item as presented by the Director.
Second.
Is there any comments? Call a question? Motion carries four zero. Item three, please.
To ratify previous action by the County Manager, authorizing emergency repairs to a segment of Cumberland Parkway, and approve WO Number 01 to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for Cumberland Parkway Restoration Program Number WF4333, MIS contract number 000606. On April 2nd, 2015, an existing 12-inch water main buried beneath Cumberland Parkway ruptured, causing a section of the roadway sidewalk and curb and gutter to collapse. Two northbound lanes were closed between Pace's Walk and Pace's Ferry Road pending emergency repairs. The Department, in collaboration with the water system, recommended retaining a unit price contractor to repair the roadway. The County Manager, under emergency authority granted by the Board of Commissioners, approved commencement of repairs. We recommend that the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager, authorizing emergency repairs to a segment of Cumberland Parkway in response to the water main rupture on April 2nd, 2015. Approve Work Order Number 01 to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $170,746.80 for said repairs. Cumberland Parkway Roadway Restoration Program Number WF4333, MIS contract number 000606. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Oat?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Let me comment. I thought, Mr. County Manager, you prep and prepare your staff for issues like this, especially those that come across multiple agencies, DOT, Water, Public Safety, Communications, and your office, and I think, Commissioner Oat, you'll agree that once it was identified that there was an issue, I think it was identified through the fact that water was coming out of the road.
Yes, sir.
You deploy the appropriate resources and You deploy the appropriate resources and team to minimize the impact to the community and the businesses around there, and it did, the whole staff did an extraordinary job of pulling that together and getting, minimizing the impact and, and less than a day getting that straightened out. So congratulations to you, Water, the County Manager, the Police Department, and Public Safety, anybody else, Communications, whoever was involved with that project. Well done. Example of the preparedness that you and your office do to lead, getting us ready for these kind of things that we hope never happen, but when they do, we're ready for them.
Chairman, I'd also like to say, one of the things that was really quite extraordinary that day is the value that the Traffic Management Center enabled in this, because we had the county manager on the phone, we had personnel from all the departments that you've named assembled at the TMC, we were watching what was going on, we were deploying assets and resources, we were doing the sketch planning for how to route people around the incident and so forth, and it was really a flawless, as you said, Mr. Hankerson's direction, but a flawless recovery from the situation, so.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Great job. Let's go to item four, please.
To approve a Cobb Framework Agreement with City of Smyrna for traffic signal operations. As a general practice, the department collaborates with neighboring jurisdictions to coordinate traffic signal timing across jurisdictional boundaries. Currently, there is heavy traffic movement in the weekday morning peak traffic period from westbound I two eighty-five to northbound US forty-one Cobb Parkway and to westbound Spring Road. This traffic movement shifts in the reverse direction during the evening peak traffic period. It is anticipated that the traffic flow in the Spring Road corridor will increase due to area development, including SunTrust Park. To improve signal, traffic signal operations in the area, the department and the City of Smyrna recommend coordinating traffic signals across jurisdictional boundaries by adding signals at ten intersections currently within the city to the Cobb County Adaptive Traffic Control System. This system, the Sydney Coordinated Adaptive Traffic System, SCATS, utilizes a central computer to change traffic signal timing automatically in real time in response to traffic conditions detected on the roadway. We recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve a framework agreement with the City of Smyrna for traffic signal operations and authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that what's really great about this is it shows a tremendous relationship that the county has with Mayor Bacon and the council, because this is going to tremendously help the folks in the area, especially, you know, as the traffic increases like you talked about. So really, to have this coordination is going to be a huge asset. So a motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. That takes us to Tab Five, Public Services. Mr. Cannon.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. This morning, we have three items. The first item is for the Board of Commissioners to authorize the advertisement for and conduct a public hearing prior to expending more than a hundred thousand dollars for program management services to include the 2016 Park SPOSS Program, limited general engineering services, and further authorize issuance of a request for proposals to secure these services.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Good luck with that project, Eddie.
Thank you.
Item two.
The, the second item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve three separate contracts with Turf Planer of Georgia Laser Project Products LLC for laser planning services in an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand dollars for Big Shanty Park, and an amount not to exceed sixty-four thousand for Lost Mountain Park, and an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand for Mud Creek Park. This comes under the 2011 Park SPOSS Program. We ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second, second. Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Item three, please.
Final item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a final closeout supplement agreement and deductive change order number one to the contract with Hardeman Contracting Company resulting in a credit and reducing the contract amount by twenty thousand nine hundred twenty dollars for a revised total contract of amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for construction services related to the development of Oregon Park Concession Restroom Building Number One under the 2011 Park SPOSS Program. We ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, sir. If you would briefly say where the credits go, they go back into the.
They go back into that park, into the SPOSS project that would give us the ability to do something else there that's needed to be done. This actually went back into field renovation for a couple other fields there at Oregon Park.
Great. Good job in managing this. Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Tab Six, Support Services Agency. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. This agenda item deals with the 2011 SPOSS. It's for repairs and restoration of the State Court Building, and we received a price of seventy-seven thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars from Garland Design Build Solutions utilizing the U.S. Community's Purchasing Agreement, of which Garland Design Build Solutions is an authorized vendor. This employs a process that bids unit pricing on an annual basis and makes such pricing available to local governments, such as Cobb County. The department recommends that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Garland in the amount of seventy-seven thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars utilizing the 2011 SPOSS funds for the restoration of the existing roof on the State Court Building, located at twelve East Park Square, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Thank you. Commissioner. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, John. Tab Seven, Public Safety, we have one item. Director Heaton.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager. Going to ask today to approve a contract with Best Tech Environmental Resources Incorporated for the purchase, delivery, and installation of an incinerator be located at Animal Control. Cobb County currently operates a ThermTeq G fifty-P unit which was purchased and installed in 2002. In February of 2015, we had a failure that occurred with the incinerator. We have a temporary patch that has been put in place, which does restrict the use of the incinerator, and because we knew the incinerator was reaching near the end of its useful life, we had put it in the 2016 SPOSS. So the funding would be coming from a loan from the General Fund until SPOSS funds are incoming in, at which time we would repay the General Fund. Recommendations for the Board of Commissioners to approve the contract with Best Tech Environmental Resources Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred for the purchase, delivery, and installation of a ThermTeq G fifty-P unit, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you so much. I believe this goes to Commissioner Weatherford for leadership.
Thank you. A motion to approve is presented.
Second. Any comments?
I have a question.
Absolutely. Commissioner Burrow.
I don't have it, it's for you, but.
Sure.
Maybe legal. Do we specify that the projects that are borrowed from General Fund are paid back prior to the list, Tier One list, starting, or is that a legal question?
I think it's County Manager question. What she's asking is this is a process, this is a number one, obviously, this is, this is a, an item was listed in the SPOSS begins January first. Does this, why and how does this take precedent over the Tier Two projects that exist in SPOSS?
No, not Tier Two. The, the Tier One projects that will start in sixteen.
Right.
Collection for.
Okay.
What I'm asking is, do we specify that the ones, like the police vehicles that we're borrowing from to start initially, will they be paid back before we start new projects for sixteen SPOSS?
No, ma'am. We would just get them into the party and pay them back over a period of time, and the car's on a capital lease, so it's spread out, but we would just work them into the parties as our cash flow comes in.
Okay.
It'd be my intention, with this small amount, we'd probably pay it back within the first year, within the cash flow for public safety.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second. Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Director. Let's go to Tab Eight, Community Development. There's two items. Mr. Johnson, I believe you're leading these conversations.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. First item on today's agenda for community development is to consider adoption of an amendment to Section one thirty-four of the Cobb County Code as it relates to private parks. You had public hearings on April fourteenth and April twenty-eighth. Planning Commission has made a recommendation for approval on April seventh. At the April twenty-eighth meeting, the Board asked for this to be held until today's meeting to give time for staff to communicate with the different community organizations around Cobb to get a clear understanding of what is being brought forward as the intention of this particular private parks code. Just to clarify on that, we did talk to many of the community groups. We let, made sure that they were aware that the intention of this was to make sure that all private parks came through for a special land use permit process, and that is what is being presented in front of you. Yesterday, during agenda prep, Commissioner Weatherford asked for us to more explicitly clarify that in the code change that is being brought forward, and that was distributed to yesterday and again this morning. And that was with the assistance of the county attorney as we developed that, that language per the direction from Commissioner Weatherford. So with that, sir, we would ask for you to consider adoption of the code and authorize staff to finalize this and certify it in the county code.
Thank you, Dana. Just to be clear, it, there, there was a purple sheet with a revised document provided to us yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
I was just handed yet another sheet with revisions.
The, the one that was provided to you yesterday was the one that was the under separate cover document, and that was the, the one where Commissioner Weatherford asked for us to more explicitly clarify that all private parks had to get a special land use permit, even though it was contained in there, the desire was to have it more explicit. And what staff has done has, the one that was emailed out to you later yesterday indicated that per the direction of Commissioner Weatherford.
That's the one I'm holding.
Yes, sir. That's the one you're holding in your hand right now. That's correct, sir.
Okay. Just because I asked a question doesn't mean I don't know the answer all the time. So let me make a motion that we approve the code amendment, the revised code amendments of the official Cobb, Code of Cobb County, Chapter one thirty-four zoning as presented this morning to us, and that we remove the moratorium on the applications for these particular private park applications.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Is there any comments? Call a question. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item two, please.
Item two, sir, is to consider approval of a variance to Section fifty dash two fifty-seven of the Cobb County Code as it relates to a renovation of a home at three three four six Stonewall Drive, which is in Kennesaw, Georgia. Section fifty dash two fifty-seven of the Cobb County Code states that the erection, repair, and alteration of any building must be done between the hours of seven AM and nine PM, Monday through Saturday. We are fortunate to have Fox Network premiering a new show doing a home remodeling called Home Free, where they are going to be taking a home that is in the need of a little TLC, doing some renovations on it, and then providing it back to a family in need in our community. In order to pull this off, they need to be able to work longer than the hours that our code allows. So the variance being requested today is to allow them to meet their aggressive schedule for television viewing on this for the house located at three three four six Stonewall Drive to work outside of the hour specified in the Cobb County Code.
Thank you.
Staff would recommend approval, sir.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is a, a great thing. We are movie capital now. We're going to be a TV capital, and I can't think of anything better than a show like this that benefits people in need, so it's my honor to make a motion to accept this presentation, sir.
Thank you. Motion and second. Any comments? Comments? His part is to carry the stone from the truck to the backyard.
They wouldn't do my house. It was too bad and needed repair.
Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, sir.
Come back to us, let us know how they went, please.
Yes, sir.
Tab Nine, Human Resources. This is one item associated with a, a senior associate county attorney position. After some conversation with the county attorney, that we have decided to hold this for, till our morning meeting in June, I, I need to just make it clear that this, any decision we have to delay the approval of this item is not the result of any concerns associated with creation of the position as being not illegal. We know that to be true, and this is appropriate use of SPOSS, but this is to further explore some alternatives to, to hiring this particular individual, so we'll move forward on that. And the county attorney is going to be vacationing for a couple days, so she's asked to push it off to the first meeting in June, which we will gratefully accommodate. So I don't need a motion to that effect. We just stated. Thank you. So let's move to Tab Ten, one item, the State Court. I believe Judge Lake is here. If you would come forward, please, ma'am, we appreciate you being here. I'd like to also recognize Solicitor Barry Morgan is with us today.
Mr. Morgan had to go to a meeting, an urgent meeting. He just left.
I wish I'd known that. I would have moved this item up, ma'am. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. I am here this morning with the Solicitor's Office to ask the Board of Commissioners to authorize the State Court of Cobb County to establish a Behavioral Health Court, create a part-time program coordinator position for this court, and to authorize a one-time funding amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for startup costs. If you would like, I could go into the background, the impact statement for the county. It would take me about five minutes, but essentially, we're here to request this of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. I believe we're all, we've been working with this for a couple months, so.
Yes, sir.
Let's see, Commissioners, any comments? I'll defer to Commissioner Weatherford, who has been the lead on this project for, his leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Judge Lake, and all your leadership in getting this program together for those in the public that may or may not know. This is something we've been working on a few months, and the whole purpose in a nutshell and a country boy fashion for me to tell you is that we're trying to catch those in need of some behavioral health services at the state court level before they rise to the Superior Court, which is misdemeanors versus felonies, and we think it would be a good investment in our community, and it has proven to be a lot of work, and Judge Lake has done a, a great job doing it, so my honor to make a recommendation to approve this, sir.
As presented, correct?
Yeah, as presented, yes.
Thank you. There's a motion, there's two seconds. Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries four zero. Congratulations, Mr. Judge. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Takes us to Tab Eleven, Community Development. There are four show cause hearings. Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager, Madam County Attorney. For the benefit of the applicants, I am Sam Hensley Jr., representing the Business License Division of Cobb County, and you are correct, sir, we do have four items on our agenda this morning, so we'll just go down the list with your leave and, and start calling them one by one.
Thank you.
The first hearing involves Mr. Tuan Hicks, who I do believe is present today.
Mr. Hicks.
Might want to sound for him. I don't know if he's here.
Mr. Hicks. Mr. Hicks.
If I'm not mistaken, I did see him present in the meeting room. He may have stepped out. I do not know, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody that knows who he is that could check? Thank you, Mr. Hosack. While he does that, why don't we move to item two?
That will be perfectly fine, Mr. Chairman. The second item involves Orbit Home Services LLC, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Orbit Poe Jr. I do not believe that Mr. Poe is present today, so we might need to sound for him and then decide what to do with this matter.
Mr. Poe.
Neither I nor any of the staff for Business License Division have seen him this morning. Excuse the interruption. I didn't mean to.
That's quite right.
Talk on top of you, Mr. Chairman. This application was for a business registration certificate, a business license, and a door-to-door solicitation application for what was described as roof repair services. Mr. Poe does not reside in Cobb County. He resides in Gwinnett County in Snellville. So essentially what he was applying for, or would be applying for is a note fee registration of his business in, to do business in Cobb County. He was denied that administratively due to a, a number of felonies that appeared on his application. The background check that was conducted by the Cobb Police Department revealed these. He did not reveal all of these violations or these arrests and convictions on his application. He did mention one that was in Florida, but the others, and there were a multitude of them, were not mentioned. So my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, would be, and, and let me state that this is an original hearing. This was not brought before the License Review Board. Under our Code 7845, denials of business registration certificate applications are brought directly to the Board of Commissioners. So this is a hearing of first impression, and my recommendation, considering the absence of Mr. Poe. And in fact, he did have another hearing scheduled in April. He requested a continuance at that time. That was granted. He was notified of this hearing today. I believe there was some communication, some telephonic communication with the Business License Division reminding him that this hearing was being held today. And the indication I got was that he was very busy and might not be able to be here. So my recommendation would be to deny the application for the business registration certificate for Orbit Home Services and the door-to-door solicitation permit application for Mr. Orbit Poe Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. I agree we bring that motion, bring that recommendation forward as a motion to the Board.
May I have a point of order here, please?
Absolutely.
Mr. Hensley, do you think it would be appropriate to state to the Board the reasons for the denial such that they actually have some evidence to consider?
Absolutely. And as I indicated, and I'm happy to bring up the Police Department Detective Argano to discuss in detail what those violations were.
I think if you could prevent, if you can present, if you're familiar with them enough to present them, please do.
The only one that I'm familiar with was the violation.
Then bring her up.
So I would, I would prefer to defer to Detective Argano, if I may do that.
Thank you.
And I will swear in the witness with your leave, Mr. Chairman. Do you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding? Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Could you please identify yourself for the Board?
Detective Anthony Argano with the Cobb County Police Permits and Regulatory Service Unit.
And how long have you been employed in that unit, sir?
Approximately one year.
Okay. And what are your responsibilities in your position with that unit?
We regulate alcohol sales and taxis.
Okay. And you also perform background checks for various applications through the Business License Division, is that correct?
We do.
Are you familiar with Orbit Home Services LLC and Mr. Orbit Poe Jr., who are the subjects of this hearing today?
I am.
And can you tell us how you are familiar with them, please?
Yeah, I can. During a routine background investigation, our office obtained a copy of the applicant's GCIC criminal history. A review of the arrests, convictions contained therein revealed several arrests, convictions that included the following. On February 28, 2005, in Clayton County State Court, there was a conviction of battery and simple battery, cruelty to children, which were misdemeanors. And March 10, 2011, in Gwinnett County Superior Court, there was a conviction of battery, which is, which was a misdemeanor. On September 10, 2014, in Gwinnett County Superior Court, there was two counts of battery, simple ba, two counts of, two counts of battery, two counts of simple battery, and cruelty to children. And there's also a cause of excessive physical or mental pain, which is a first degree felony.
And is it not the case, Detective Argano, that under our code, specifically Section 78-112A, that an application for a business registration certificate may be denied on the basis of a crime of assault or battery?
That's true.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, unless you have some questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions in Board? Ms. Dance, I had presented a motion. Is that still standing, or should I revise it given this new?
You should restate it in light of the evidence presented.
Thank you. Therefore, I'd like to bring forward a motion for the Board's consideration that due to the evidence presented to this morning, that due cause does exist to deny the Cobb County occupation tax certificate business registration and door-to-door solicitation permit for Orbit Home Services doing business, or as Orbit Home Services located at 4148 Astree Street, Snellville, Georgia, Orbit Poe Jr. App, Owner, Applicant. And that's a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. The motion carries four zero. Thank you all.
Did that motion include the door-to-door solicitation permit? And do we need a separate motion for that?
It did include a door-to-door solicitors permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So let's go back to, I see that, I understand that Mr. Hicks is now here. Is that true? Thank you, sir. Let's go back to item one. Mr. Hensley, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On item one, we are here today on the appeal of a denial of an application for an alcohol work permit for Mr. Tuan Hicks while working at Sprayberry Bottle Shop at 2692 Sandy Plains Road, Marietta, Georgia, 30066. Mr. Chairman, this application was administratively denied by the Business License Division based on a recommendation by the Cobb Police Department Regulatory Services and Permits Unit due to a felony burglary conviction in July of 2011. That conviction constitutes a violation of our Cobb County Code Sections 6-206 and 6-207, which allows that a, a application of this type may be denied based on a conviction within the last five years of a crime involving moral turpitude. This appeal was heard before the License Review Board, Mr. Chairman, on March 26 of 2015. The License Review Board at that time recommended that the permit be denied by a three-zero vote, and the applicant appealed that decision to the BLC to be heard today. So with your leave, I will swear in our witnesses for this case.
Please.
If you'll be testifying in this hearing, or believe that you'll be testifying, would you stand and raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding? Shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, say, "I do." Thank you. You may be seated. I'd again like to call Detective Anthony Argano, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good morning again. And we'll repeat our introductions as we do each of these, just so it's on the record. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Anthony Argano.
And where are you employed, Detective Argano?
Cobb County Police Permits and Regulatory Unit.
And remind us again, please, what your responsibilities and duties are in that unit?
No, we regulate alcohol and taxi services.
And therefore you would review any alcohol work permit applications that are sent to the county, is that correct?
That's correct.
And are you familiar with Mr. Tuan Hicks, who's the subject of this hearing today?
I am.
Did you perform a background check on an application for an alcohol work permit for Mr. Hicks?
We did.
And what was the result of that background check, sir?
The background check, pretty much when an applicant comes into our office to apply for the alcohol work permit, on the backside of that application, in big, bold, black letters, it clearly asks it, it states list any time that you have been, ever been arrested. And then says additionally, for any citations involving drugs or alcohol. The applicant put none, indicating that he's never been arrested before. When we did that background check, he had been arrested several times, and one of the charges, like you mentioned, he was arrested or convicted for a burglary charge in July of 2011.
And based on that discovery in his background, did you make a recommendation to the Business License Division?
Yes, we did. We recommended that he be denied.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Does the Board have any questions, Detective?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We do have Sandra Richardson here from the Business License Division in the event that the Board has any questions regarding that application, but that's the only witness I intend to call, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Hicks, at this time, you can come forward, please. We'd welcome comments and any opening statements that you want to make. And then if you have any witnesses that you'd like to bring forward on your behalf at this time, would be the appropriate time to do that as well, so.
Just, uh, just one comment on the application.
Well, I need, I'm sorry. And I realize you, you don't come here and do this a lot, so it's my bad, but I need you to state your name for the record, please, so we can capture that.
My name is Tuan Hicks.
Thank you, sir.
I just have one statement about the application. When I read it, I, I knew what it meant, and then I brisma, uh, misread, excuse me, misread the, the last part. The way that I had believed it to be was just, did I have any drug or alcohol-related charges? Because I've done plenty of applications where I have to notify the company that I'm applying for, that, hey, I have a background. So it wasn't nothing that I was trying to hide, I just mistakenly, uh, misread it.
Okay. Any, do you have any other?
Uh, no, sir. The, the hearing I had, March 26, I had a, I had to get a letter from my probation officer stating that it was okay for me to work there, which he agreed.
Okay. Anything else you would like for us to consider?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Do you have any witnesses that you'd like to bring forward?
No, sir.
So would you, are there any closing comments you'd like to present to us?
Just hoping I can get my permit to start working.
Okay. Are there any questions for the Board?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Do we have a copy of that letter in the record? Do we have a letter?
She's looking, Sandra's looking. You can't see her.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at Bonnie. While she's looking for that, have you had, you've been on probation since July of 2011, since the occurrence of the burglary?
Yes, ma'am.
And have you had any other convictions of any arrests or any violations?
In 2012, September, I was arrested on a probation violation due to the fact that I didn't have a, I was supposed to have two drug and alcohol evaluations, and it wasn't made clear like through me and my probation officer. So I end up doing two months in, for the mistake, because she knew I had one, but she didn't clarify, you need to get it another, I needed to get another one. And so she, when I got out, she took all my fees and turned it into a community service for the mistake. So I wouldn't have to pay like the probation fees to be on probation and the fines. So I had to do 120 hours of community service.
But what was the violation?
Um, it wasn't, it was, um, I didn't have a drug and alcohol evaluation. I didn't have two, excuse me. I had one. So I had to get another evaluation, and then she converted all the fees and fines to community service.
Okay.
Mr. Hensley, I fail to recognize you for comments and questions, so please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have some questions. And first of all, it appears that that letter from the probation supervisor is not physically with us. I do recall that that was presented at the License Review Board, but I think that's in the Business License Division. So my apologies that we don't have that in front of us, but we will certainly stipulate that he has received permission from his probation supervisor in regard to being employed at this establishment. My first question to you, Mr. Hicks, is do you understand what the term moral turpitude means?
Uh, could you explain it for me?
I'll be happy to. Would you disagree with me if I said that that is a crime that involves generally fraud, deceit, dishonesty, something other than, say, a crime of violence? Does that make sense to you?
I understand, I understand.
Okay. Do you understand why it would be important for someone who is given a permit to sell alcohol in Cobb County to be a person of integrity, to be an honest person, to be somebody who's not deceitful?
Yes.
Can you understand why that would be important?
Yes.
Why would that be important?
Because you don't want somebody abusing alcohol. Like I can, me having that permit, I might be able to do other things with that permit.
Uh, would it be fair to say that you are the last line of defense as a seller of alcohol? For example, an underage person coming into your store?
Yes.
And attempting to buy alcohol?
Yes, I, I know.
Do you have any experience selling alcohol at other establishments, sir?
Um, just from working at restaurants.
Which restaurants?
I worked at a Buffalo's and a Longhorn's.
Okay. Were those in Cobb County?
They were.
Okay. So you had a server's permit for those establishments? Do you still work there?
No, no, these were previous jobs.
How did you come to be offered this job at Sprayberry Bottle Shop?
Um, the, the bottle shop is right next door to an Arby's that I was working at. And, um, like I always go with my mom, and I'll see the guy, and we knew mutual people because we both went to Sprayberry. And then he, um, I got off at Arby's one day, and he was like, hey, he was like, he was like, you want another job? Because like I was always like, working, 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 like, I didn't like free days. I just liked to work. So he offered me one, and, um, I believe the first week I did the paperwork and stuff, he was like, oh, oh, you gotta get your permit. And then that's when I applied.
Okay.
Like he just, uh, just came to me, you know, because he, he always saw me at Arby's. And he talked to my managers, and he knew I was a worker, so he can hire somebody, you know, he can depend on.
What is Sprayberry Bottle Shop's policies on carding people or checking IDs before selling alcohol to customers?
Cars, they bring the item to the counter, ID, ID, or if we get a, a younger person to come in, like that looks like my age, we'll card them before they, like, are shopping around.
So you don't even let them in the store if they're not?
Like, they'll, they'll come in, and we're just like, if, uh, if they just look young, like automatically card them. If it's an older, older gentleman, an older lady, you know, card them at the counter.
Okay. What training have you had, sir, in regard to responsible sales of alcohol?
Um, for what he wants me to do, it's, uh, it's more of on reading up on what we get in, because he's big on craft beer. And so he, um, he would tell me that, hey, look at this site, check this out, this is coming in, read up on this, so you know, you'll be able to talk to customers about what we have.
So you've been trained in the types of products that you sell?
Yes.
But you haven't been trained on how, for example, to identify fake IDs, how to identify an ID that shows a person that's underage? Is that fair to say?
I, I can identify an ID that's underage just from having my own.
What's the difference in an ID in the state of Georgia for someone who is under the age of 21 and someone who's older?
In the border of their picture, it will clearly say under 21.
Okay. I want to show you your application that you referred to just a moment ago, where I believe you said, and forgive me if I'm misstating you, that you made a mistake?
Yes.
That you misread this application? This is the back of that application where you are asked to list your prior arrests. Can you read the statement that you were referring to that gave you the instructions for filling out this portion of the application? Read it out loud, please.
It says, list any time that you have been arrested.
And the word arrested is bolded and underlined, correct?
Yeah, clear, like that's where I was gonna put what I, like my past crimes.
It doesn't even have to be a conviction. It says arrested, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you understand the difference, correct?
Yes, yes. Like being arrested on something doesn't mean you were actually proven guilty of it.
Correct. And you didn't list anything?
No, I didn't.
Can you understand why this Board might be concerned?
I, I, I do understand.
If you supposedly misread this, that you might also misread an identification or be careless in checking IDs when you're selling alcohol in your store?
I, I can understand the concern.
Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there any further questions from the Board?
I have a couple.
Yes.
Mr. Hicks, I notice you said in your response that you have learned your lesson from the burglary in 2011. You've been on probation.
Yes, sir. Ever, ever since that, I've been just trying to work and change things around.
Is this a better job than what you've had in the past?
Yes, sir.
And that if you were to get this permit, you would be able to continue and go to a Safe Service School, so you learn exactly how to check varieties and things? I believe that's a, that's a, a training and things like that. And your probation officer has recommended that it's okay for this, for you to have this job?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
At this point, if you could summarize your request and any, any thoughts you have as to what you'd like for us to consider?
I just, uh, asked you to grant me the permit so I can get back to working and taking care of my responsibilities.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hensley, final comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, obviously, we do appreciate, especially our young people who were willing to work and work hard. And, and find employment and take care of their family obligations and so forth. There's a bit of a concern, which I'm sure you share. About the rather casual approach to one's responsibilities and selling alcohol here, I'm not sure that the training is there. Um, I'm not sure that we've been presented a, a real compelling reason to grant an alcohol permit here. And it's always troubling when an individual is not honest on the application. I always find it very difficult to believe that people don't read that statement. It's on the application that clearly says, list your arrests and don't understand what that means. So I will just leave this decision in the good judgment of this board, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you. Well, as Mr. Hensley stated, moral turpitude is very serious. And it's something that I, and I feel like the rest of the board do not take lightly. Um, on the other hand. To me, there's no excuse for intentionally lying on an application. I know that, um, you've stated that you misread or misunderstood. And you've got a little over a year left on your probation. And I know that, um. I, I'm. I, I think that, um, in light of the testimony and the information presented. Uh, I would make a motion to uphold the license review board's decision to deny.
Thank you, I'll second the motion, is there any comments? Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Um, my, I just, as I'm sitting here listening, yes, and I agree with Commissioner Burrow on, on the fact that. Um, it always kind of causes a little bit of a pause. When it's indicated that there is the appearance that someone might have not been totally truthful on their application, however. Um, I think back to one of our previous agenda items with the creation of the Behavioral Court. On the state court level and the whole purpose, as Commissioner Weatherford stated, was to stop someone's transition from misdemeanors. To felonies and then recidivism back into, into prison. And, um, you know, listening to the responses, I just, I think that we have someone here who is working, wants to continue working. And so, um, I'm inclined to support granting the, uh, permit.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Uh, I agree with Commissioner Odd, I, I believe we have a, um, a, a, a hardworking young man that's very articulate. Is trying to make a better life for himself and I think that our job is to recognize that and take a look at that. I would support the approval of this, uh, with a stipulation that he would be required to take the safe serve course. So that he knows exactly, uh, how to, uh, look for underage IDs and that. And with stipulation that, uh, we're putting some faith in you, uh, if it is approved and we expect you to. Keep going the path that you're going. So, uh, I couldn't support denial, I could support an approval.
Okay, so let me, um, just state this, my, my thoughts are this, you know. Service of alcohol, especially at a store that is nothing but alcohol. I think there is a very. Strong responsibility that store owner and the people there to be totally up to date, one hundred and fifty percent on everything. Uh, associated with state law and, and the process and procedures, uh, before they even open the doors. When you enter an automobile store to work on cars, if it's an automobile repair store, you better know how to fix cars. If you walk into an alcohol retail store, you better know the state laws that relates to the underage. And the very glaring question, what are the indications of a license by the state of Georgia? Uh, someone being under twenty-one, the most glaring obvious. I think fact in that regard is that they're vertical versus horizontal. And to not know that and not declare that as an immediate response gives me concern for pause. Commissioners, I, I don't disagree, this gentleman has a desire to do better, I think he has a desire to work hard. I would channel his desire towards a, an industry or it's. Some kind of opportunity outside of this responsibility associated with serving alcohol, the potential students of Sprayberry. Which is just up the street that might learn of, even through this hearing, of the. Unawareness of the intent and facts of state laws relates to checking, uh, IDs. And I just can't see how we move forward in providing the opportunity for this gentleman at a store. That sells nothing but alcohol, that has a drive-through facility for sales of alcohol, is so close to high school. And doesn't understand state law and requirements and has not had the training. Of which I'm sure I would have made sure I either registered for or went through before I came forward in front of this board. Um, and I, and I, I just, I just can't move forward on it. Now, it appears as if we're moving forward, um, a two-two vote unless. The, you, one of the, either Commissioner Weatherford or Commissioner Odd would reconsider their position.
No, I feel that we.
So with that, I'll call the question. The motion is two-two and it'll be brought forward and win for Commissioner Cupid's consideration.
To the next meeting.
So the next.
The morning meeting.
Let me talk. Would that, which meeting would that be, the thirty days from today or the night meeting associated with this?
My recollection was that it remained pending till the next meeting, but if, if it's your pleasure to do it, the next morning meeting.
Now, let's do it. Let's do it the next meeting, which would be the night meeting for May. So this remains pending to the night, night meeting in May for Lisa Cupid's consideration and her vote.
Could I just ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
My understanding is that there is no hearing, no testimony or anything, it just, um, that's already been done. Similar to the zoning case we have that's coming to the next zoning hearing, um, that we had a two-two vote. We just simply have to have a vote for Commissioner Cupid to cast her vote, correct?
That is generally correct, I believe the last time the record was reviewed in advance.
Thank you, so move on to the next item, line three, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item three is a hearing on an application for a renewal. Of an alcohol work permit for Mr. Robert Rhodes. While working at East Cobb Exxon Food Mart at forty-two forty-four Roswell Road, Marietta three zero zero six two. Mr. Chairman, this application was denied by the Business License Division. Due to a citation for the sale of alcohol to an underage buyer during the period in which his application for renewal, uh, was pending. Therefore, this is technically not a show cause hearing, it is a denial based on a, a underage sale that occurred. On January twenty-ninth of this year. We will be presenting the facts of that compliance check that was conducted that gave rise to this denial. But it's a little bit of a timing issue that's brought us to this posture in this matter. Mr. Rhodes was also cited for working without a valid alcohol permit on that date. Since the, uh, actually, he had not even submitted his renewal at that point, it had expired on December nineteenth. Uh, and for whatever reason, he had not submitted an application for renewal. That occurred after he took care of the adjudication of his citations. Which I believe the disposition of that case was on March seventeenth of this year. Uh, the appeal was heard before the license review board on March twenty-sixth of this year. The LRB recommended that the permit be granted. However, this board did not affirm this recommendation and has pulled it for consideration to date and that is why we are here before you today. So with your lead, Mr. Chairman, I will swear in the witnesses for this matter.
Please.
If you'll be testifying in this hearing or believe that you'll be testifying, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, if so, say, I do. And sir, you may come and sit closer to the front if you don't mind, you might be able to hear better. I'd like to call Detective Anthony Argano, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Again, for the benefit of our applicant, would you please identify yourself?
Detective Anthony Argano with the Cobb County Police Permits and Regulatory Services Unit.
And briefly, again, your duties in that position are what?
Uh, we regulate alcohol and taxi services.
Okay, and as a part of those duties, do you also, uh, perform what are known as compliance checks? For establishments that are licensed to serve alcohol?
We do.
And what does that involve?
Uh, pretty much, uh, I will go in or Sergeant Smith will go inside either a business or a restaurant, gas station. Uh, underage volunteer will come in the store shortly after we do and then they will attempt to purchase alcohol.
Okay, and was such a compliance check performed at the East Cobb Exxon Food Mart? Which is, uh, along with Mr. Robert Rhodes, the subject of this hearing today?
We do.
And, uh, what date was that, did that occur?
That was on Thursday, January twenty-ninth at approximately six fifty-five PM.
And could you please describe for the board what occurred?
Okay, um, pretty much I walked into the gas station, shortly after I walked in, the underage male volunteer entered the business. The underage male volunteer picked up a bottle of wine, went to the cash register, he was the only one in line. He purchased the bottle of wine, his ID wasn't asked for. He gave the, uh, Mr. Rhodes a twenty-dollar bill that was marked by, by us. Um, he left the store after purchasing the bottle of wine. He went back to the police, the, our car with Sergeant Smith, at that time, I then approached the cash register, talked to Mr. Rhodes, advised him. That I was a Cobb County Police Officer and that he had just sold alcohol to an underage subject shortly after that. So Sergeant Smith came back in with the bottle of wine, we gave the bottle of wine back. We received our twenty-dollar bill and we gave the change back to Mr. Rhodes.
So you did personally observe this sale take place?
I did.
And, uh, describe what the, what was going on in the store that night, was it busy, was it crowded, was?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't crowded, it was, I think there might have been one or two hundred people tops inside the gas station. Um, when the underage male went up to the cash register, he was, he was the only one in line, there was no one behind him. He, uh, made the purchase and left the store.
Okay, and is the clerk, whom I believe you identified as Robert Rhodes, that made that sale present in this hearing this morning?
Yes, it's one.
Can you identify him, please?
Black woolly shirt and black pants.
For the record, it's the gentleman who raised his hand identified as Robert Rhodes. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman, unless the applicant or the board has questions.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Rhodes?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Put your mic on, please.
I'm sorry. Um, in the information that was presented, it also said that his permit had expired?
Actually, yes, good point, it, it did expire, it expired on December nineteenth of two thousand fourteen.
Okay. Thank you.
And a citation was written for that as well, correct?
Thank you. So, Mr. Rhodes, do you have any questions for the detective? Thank you, sir.
No, I don't.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Detective.
I'd also like to call Sergeant Bonnie Smith, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, could you identify yourself for the record, please?
I'm Sergeant Bonnie Smith with the Cobb County Police Department Regulatory Services Unit.
And what are your responsibilities as a member of that unit?
Uh, we do background investigations for any alcohol applications that come into our unit from the Business License Office. As well as we regulate over seven hundred businesses in the county that have alcohol licenses. Uh, and we maintain records and regulate alcohol, I'm sorry, taxi services and record contracts with the county.
And are you also involved in compliance checks that are performed on various establishments? That are licensed to sell alcohol and various individuals who are permitted to sell alcohol in Cobb County?
Yes, the compliance check is part of the regulation for those businesses that hold the alcohol licenses.
And were you present either inside or outside this establishment, the East Cobb Exxon Food Mart on January twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen? When this compliance check took place?
I was, I was outside the location, uh, when the underage and Detective Argano entered their location. And then I was in the vehicle waiting on the underage to return.
Okay, and what happened when the underage, uh, volunteer returned to your vehicle?
He returned to me with a bottle of wine, uh, and some change, eleven dollars and fifteen cents, I believe, um, without looking at the report. Um, it, but it was the, the change as a result of a sale that occurred inside the location when he purchased the bottle of wine.
Okay, now, there's been some discussion as well about Mr. Rhodes having an expired alcohol work permit, is that correct?
He did, uh, once we re-entered the loca, I entered the location with Detective Argano after the sale occurred. We do part of the, uh, inspection, once we're there, uh, regarding the sale. We do a permits inspection, at the same time, we asked Mr. Rhodes if he had a permit and we discovered that permit had expired in December of two thousand fourteen. So he did receive a citation for that violation at the time we gave him the citation for the sale.
Okay, and didn't Mr. Rhodes subsequently, at any time, come to your office to apply for a renewal of his expired permit?
He did, he came to our office the very next morning on January thirtieth. Uh, at that time, we advised him that he was not, uh, eligible to make application for a permit. Based on the failure in the sale the previous day. We advised him that he would need to wait until he had a resolution in court. And once he did that, to come back and see us and then he could make application at that point. And depending on the result, he would either be approved or denied. Uh, he did come back to us on March seventeenth, uh, and he brought with him, or, uh, we have a copy of his result from court. He was in court on the morning of the seventeenth of March where he paid, uh, fines of, uh, I believe, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. Based on those two citations, so at that point, with his case being solidified in court and having a resolution. He was able to make application for his renewal for his permit. And at that point, we denied his application based on a sale to an underage.
Thank you, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, um. Mr. Rhodes, do you have any questions for the detective?
No, I don't.
Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the witnesses that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, if you would come forward, please. Morning, sir, I'd like for you to state your name for the record, please.
My name is Robert Rhodes.
Thank you, at this time, sir, I'd like for you to present some opening comments and bring forward any witnesses you may have and.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Cobb County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to address, um, address you this morning. Uh, on, on January twenty-ninth, I was the only cashier working at that time. And, uh, there were other customers in the store. I was concerned, I was watching two customers that come in that were in the back of the store that got my attention. And for some reason, my attention was drawn to them. And at the same time, there's a gentleman that came to the cash register to make a purchase of a bottle of wine. And what frustrates me most of all is that I always card everyone that makes an alcohol transaction. Whether it's beer or wine. And for some reason, I neglected to ask for his personal ID, which is my mistake and my oversight. Thinking about what else was going on in the store. My mistake and oversight has cost me a considerable amount of money. With fine and court costs and being unemployed since January twenty-ninth, it's been over four thousand dollars. I'd like to respectfully request that the approval and reinstatement of my alcohol work permit be issued. And as far as my alcohol work permit that was out of date, that has expired. When I first received it, I put it behind my driver's license in my wallet and never bothered to take it out and look at it. And that's another oversight. So basically, I know the store has a new policy and the policy is to display all alcohol work permits at the register. So we all can see, or they can see what the expiration dates are and adjust accordingly to get them renewed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, how long have you worked at that establishment, the Exxon, I believe it is?
Little over a year.
Okay, did you have any prior experience selling alcohol before you took that job?
I did years ago in another state, I was a licensed, uh, had a, uh, alcohol license to run a bar.
Oh, really?
Nightclub, yes.
Okay, when is the last time that you ran the bar that you're referring to?
That was in nineteen sixty-
That was in 1966.
Okay, so it's been a while. And what kind of training have you had in preparation for this job that you had at the Exxon, as far as responsible sales of alcohol?
Responsible sales of alcohol, they have a very extensive manual that's put out by Exxon, so I reviewed that several times, and also on the job training, which they were very helpful to do it in the beginning, and there was no problem, the thing that frustrates me the most is, I don't know what I was thinking about at the time, but I always card every alcohol sales.
Right, and I'm sure you can appreciate, sir, that, and I use this phrase a lot in these hearings, you are the last line of defense.
Absolutely.
For someone who does not need to be able to purchase alcohol, to do so, whether it's an underage person, an intoxicated person, whomever it may be.
You can see that firsthand as a cashier.
I'm sure you can, and I'm sure you can understand why the board might have some concerns that we have not one, but two apparent oversights, number one is not getting your permit renewed on time.
Correct.
And number two, being distracted in a store that apparently wasn't otherwise very busy, and failing to do what you've told us you do every time.
Correct.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Rhodes.
Does the cash register have a point-of-sale system for you to enter the date?
It has a prompt, but it doesn't have that you can enter the date.
So what does the prompt say?
Alcohol sales, and it just, the card at that point.
And...
You don't have to enter a date to complete the transaction.
Do you have to hit return, or do you have to do some physical action to move to the next step on entering the sale?
The next step is just to hit the alcohol key on the register.
So there is a reminder on the register?
There is a reminder on the register, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Rhodes, if you would, please, if you have any further additional comments you would like to make to the board?
No, it's been quite an experience and a very expensive one for me, and I would just like to get back to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, I do understand and appreciate the economic hardship that folks like Mr. Hicks previously and Mr. Rhodes now experience when they run afoul of the code for the sale of alcohol in Cobb County, but it's going to be much more expensive if someone gets hurt as a result of inattentiveness or being distracted, so there's, there's some concern with an individual who I think is well-intended, probably is otherwise conscientious about his job, but I do think there is some concern that needs to be weighed very carefully by this board, and I would leave the decision in your good judgment, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Otte?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, what really kind of stands out to me is a lack of attention to detail, and as this board knows, the person who rings up the sale is the last line of defense, and as, when I hear about the distraction, that gives me a lot of concern too, because it is pretty much known, I think, by everyone that a group of underage folks can go into a store, and that's the easiest way to try to divert the salesperson's attention, is by having a distraction in some other part of the store to kind of break them of routine. It appears to me that there is no routine here, especially in light of the fact that when I asked the question about on the register, there really was two instances here where a lack of attention to detail allowed this sale to go on, number one was first asking for the ID when the underage person brought the bottle of wine up to the cash register, and the second was just inadvertently hitting the button to go on to the next step on the cash register to allow the sale to go forward, and if that alone by itself was the issue, that would be one thing, but then, an additional lack of attention to detail is not having a valid permit, which had been expired for over a month, you know, when you have certain certificates or requirements that are needed for your job, there should be much more of a attention to detail, so I cannot support the Licensed Review Board's decision in granting this license, and would make a motion to deny the alcohol permit.
Second.
It's a motion, a second, any comments from the board? Call the question, motion carries 3-1, Commissioner, or who am I, Chairman Lee in opposition? We have one more case, I believe.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, our final case on the agenda involves Mr. Ronald Cryer, and I believe Mr. Cryer is here, he is present. This is an application, Mr. Chairman, for a taxicab driver's permit for Mr. Ronald Cryer while working at A1 Cab Company, this application was administratively denied by the Business License Division on the recommendation of the Cobb Police Department Regulatory Services and Permits Unit due to a violation of Cobb Code Section 126-172D5, and that is having four or more moving violations within a 12-month period of time, those cases were adjudicated on December 11th, 2014, November 5th, 2014, July 10th, 2014, and March 20th, 2014. An appeal on this denial was heard before the Licensed Review Board on March 26th, and the Licensed Review Board recommended that the permit be granted, again, this board did not affirm that recommendation and pull the matter from the consent agenda to be heard again today, so with your leave, Mr. Chairman, I will swear in the witnesses, and we will proceed.
Thank you.
If you'll be testifying in this hearing or believe that you'll be testifying, could you stand and raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this proceeding, shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, if so, say I do, thank you. I'd like to call Detective Anthony Argano, Mr. Chairman. One last time this morning, would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Detective Anthony Argano, Cobb County Police Permits and Regulatory Services Unit.
And as part of your duties with that unit, we've talked a lot about alcohol this morning, do you also regulate taxicab driver permits and licenses?
We do.
And are you familiar with Mr. Ronald Cryer, who I believe put in an application for a taxicab driver's work permit?
I am.
And how are you familiar with that application?
Ronald Cryer, he came into our office on March 23rd of this year, and he applied for the taxi permit, and part of the process, when you apply for a taxi permit, you have to submit your seven years' driver's history, and part of the county code is, you can't have more than, you can't have more than four or more, four or more moving violations in a one-year or 12-month period is a deniable offense where we could deny you for that taxi permit, and based on the driver's history, or, you know, report that we received, he had four moving violations within a 12-month period, so at that, based on that, that's why he was denied his taxi permit.
And do you have the dates of those violations?
I do, on December 11th of 2014, he received a citation for following too closely, on on November 5th of 2014, he was also written a citation for failure to report for striking a fixed object, on July 10th of 2014, he was, he was written a citation for failure to obey a traffic control device, and then in March, March 20th of 2014, he was issued another citation for following too closely.
I assume on the violation for failure to perform your duty upon striking a fixed object, that there was an accident involved, that's kind of a necessary element of that, were there accidents involved in any of the other violations?
I would assume, based on the following too closely, doing this job for 12 years, I personally have not written a citation for following too closely unless it's involved in an accident, so what I would assume that the two tickets for following too closely were involved, accident-wise.
Okay, well, I won't ask you to assume, but I just was curious if we had that information in the file there, that's all the questions that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Cryer, is that correct, did I pronounce that correct? Any questions for the detective?
Oh, no, sir.
Thank you, just the board? Thank you, detective.
That's all the questions that I have, or the only witnesses that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cryer, if you would, please come forward at this point, first state your name for the record, and then if you would, provide any testimony that you would like to present and bring forward any witnesses you would like to bring forward.
Yes, sir, thank you, I was instructed to bring copies of any paperwork?
I'm sorry, sir, I'll need your name for the record, please.
Ronald Cryer.
Thank you.
Want my address?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. I have copies for, of documents I might, that I wanted to present?
Please, if you'd hand them to Brad, he'll hand them to the clerk. Mr. Hensley will want to review them.
There should be nine separate ones there. I have a very short opening statement.
Sure.
I'm here naturally to request that my taxicab permit be reissued, and allow me to return to work, and naturally, I would be looking forward to returning to work as of tomorrow AM, my normal schedules at that I work when I do drive is 3:00 AM in the morning till 3:00 PM in the afternoon, about anywhere from 11, 12, 13 hour day, and I usually work on a Monday through Sunday, I'll work a seven-day week most of the time. You know, I've, I've been out of work since March 23rd, and here again, I am in a bind. My first concern is to get back to work, to get some income so I can continue living where I'm living and paying the bills that I have, as of today, I can't do that. In less than probably a week, the way things are going now, I could very well be homeless and on the street and unemployed, and I'm 78 years old, I've worked all my life, I have never been unemployed and had to face this kind of a problem, I've been a resident of Cobb County since 1982, at one time, I even had my own tree service business in Cobb County, and my business license was with Cobb County, and my company was named Sunbelt Tree Service, and I had that business here in Cobb County for about 12, 12, 13 years, my major client while I had my company was Post Properties, and most people in Cobb County are familiar with Post Properties, I did oodles of work for them, pre-construction and post-construction on their properties. I have driven for A1 Cab for over 10 years, which means that I go in every year to go through the process of a business license and a taxicab permit, and have never come across a problem, have always been approved, my record driving over the years, over the years should definitely speak for itself. Now, I stand here in front of you, and I accept full responsibility for all and any of my actions, and... When I came across a, across a problem, especially on these following too closely, I can recall two of them, that I got a citation for following too closely, and we were doing, I was doing less than three miles an hour, what happened, we get a stop sign or a traffic light, right-hand turns, car in front of me would move, and I would be looking to watch the traffic, knowing that they're moving, and they didn't continue to move, or their back bumper, and this happened on two occasions, and I did get a citation for these, I went and I paid every, every, every ticket or ticket that I got, I didn't hesitate, I was guilty, I talked to the officers when I came out, and explained to them exactly what happened, and they said, "Well, we have to cite you because you hit them," and I said, "I understand." And what I did, I went and I took, and had performed on me Lasik eye surgery on both eyes, first the left eye, then going back on the right eye, I had them done by the same surgeons, my pre-op and post-op physician is in Lithia Springs, my surgeon itself is in Sandy Springs, and I stand here before you today where, after wearing glasses most of my years, I now just need reading glasses, they did a super job, and I have no, no other comment to make, other than, I just hope you consider, you have taken into deep consideration my appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cryer, if you could stay there, please.
I'm going to ask you a few questions, sir, and first of all, we are all very sympathetic to your financial situation, but I do have some concerns that I would like to ask you about. Is it not true, sir, that in each one of these four violations that have all occurred last year, so they're fairly recent, involved accidents?
Yes, sir.
And...
Excuse me, I'm going to, I'm going to need him to talk into the mic, please.
Yes.
Yes, all four, they were considered accidents.
Thank you, and were you driving a cab during any of these?
I was driving the cab on all four occasions.
Did you have a fare with you in any of these occasions?
I had no fares at either one of them.
Okay. And you, I believe, and first of all, Mr. Chairman, I have no objection to the documents that he has submitted to evidence, in fact, I think they're very helpful, you indicated that you've had some eye surgery, is that correct, was that for cataracts or what was it?
Cataract, Lasik surgery on both eyes.
And when did that surgery occur?
According to the documents that I gave you, I think they were late July and early August.
Of 2014?
Yes.
So that means, does it not, sir, that two of these accidents occurred after you had the corrective eye surgery?
It could have been a month or two after, I'm not, I'm not really sure on the dates.
The first violation, the most recent, was on November 10th, 2014, does that sound right?
Okay, I think, I think that was in Powder Springs, or, oh, no, that was Ostele, I think.
According to what you have submitted, that is correct.
Yes, right.
And then the second most recent was in October, so less than a month earlier, you also had an accident, striking a fixed object in Powder Springs, is that correct?
That was in Powder Springs, that was at the Waffle House in Powder Springs parking lot.
Okay.
Where I backed out of a parking spot, backing up, you know, you're not going to go fast, and I hit something which I thought was a concrete marker or block, and it just was just a tap, and I just looked, I didn't see anything, and I pulled out and left.
Okay. One of the other documents you've submitted, sir, is a document that is titled "Post-Operative Instructions for Cataract Surgery," correct?
Yes, sir, right.
And...
That's what the post-operative is, that doctor is in Lithia Springs.
I have underlined a sentence in those instructions, if you're able to read that, would you read that out loud, please?
You will have to use your own judgment about when to resume driving.
Okay, so despite that instruction, you were driving a cab after this surgery, and on at least two occasions, had an accident, correct?
Yes, sir, you're right on what you say, now, also in those documents, they said that most people who go through this operation will be able to drive within 24 to 40... operation will be able to drive within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, according to how they feel. I stayed out for forty-eight hours before I went back to work.
Okay. I believe you said you have been driving a cab for ten years, is that correct?
Ten years, A-one cab.
Okay. And while it may be difficult for all of us to admit, is it not true, sir, that as we get older, our reflexes, our vision, our ability to operate a car will diminish over time?
Uh, yes, sir, that's one of the reasons that I, I figured I better go get my eyes checked, something ain't right.
Yes.
And I'm glad I did it before there was any fatality or major injury or, and, uh, I'm pleased with what they did for me.
Despite the fact that you did have two accidents after the surgery was performed? Far, far, far beyond twenty-four hours?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And the only reason I ask you this, sir, is again, appreciating your financial situation, but I want to ask you if you do understand why this board may have some serious concerns about your ability to drive a cab where you have not only yourself but other people in the vehicle and your propensity to have accidents?
I understand what you're saying, yes, sir.
And you understand that their primary concern must be the safety of the public?
Uh, yes, sir.
The good of the many outweigh the good of the few, as the saying goes. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions to the board from Mr. Cryer? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, sir, if you have any additional comments you'd like to make to us?
Uh, I guess, in, in, in the last thing that I, I want to say is, you know, that, uh, I did go through this surgery not because I was forced to, I, with my own better judgment that told me that I, I gotta start checking something out. And I took my time off and I made my appointments, I did, had the surgery done. And, uh, and I don't regret doing that. And, uh, it forced me into, uh, not needing glasses anymore. Um, it's, it's just reading glasses provided by the surgeons. And I, I hope your decision is, is not to just send me on my way, but to allow me to turn, return to work. This is...
Thank you.
Primary right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have no additional comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. It's back to the board and, and a lot of the absence of Commissioner Cupid, I'll take the lead on this. In light of the evidence presented to us, commissioners, um, I appreciate the fact that this gentleman, Mr. Cryer, did have his surgery done to deal with his eyes and hopefully he's taking steps to take care of any other issues in my view of eyes, as we all do. But it's my opinion that the two violations after the surgery attest to the fact that there might be more to the judgment abilities rather than just the eyes. And, uh, brings me, gives me a moment for pause as to whether or not, um, we need to be moving forward with issuing a taxi cab driver permit for Mr. Cryer. Um, before I bring forward a motion, though, I'd like to entertain any comments the board might have. Commissioner Otte?
I just have a question for Mr. Hensley. What is the, in Georgia, what is the total number of points before you lose your license? Because I know that Mr. Cryer has twelve right now.
In Georgia, uh, under the purview of the Department of Driver's Services, if you accumulate fifteen points or more in any two-year period of time, then you're subject to a suspension of your driver's license.
Okay. Thank you.
And what about for a taxi cab?
Uh, I'm not aware of that, of the answer to that question. I don't know what would subject their state license to a suspension based on that kind of driving record. I do not know the answer to that question.
Thank you. Sandy, do you happen to know the answer to that, detectives? Is there any different protocol for the state point system as it relates to taxi drivers versus common citizen? Detective, your name for the record, please.
Sergeant Bonnie Smith, Cobb County Police. No, sir, at this point, it's just a Class C license, just like you and I would have. It's just the normal.
Thank you, Sergeant. Didn't mean to insult you. So commissioners, um, yes?
I, I agree with your statement.
Thank you. Um, at this mo, at this, I would like to bring forward a motion that we not uphold the recommendation of the License Review Board and that we deny the taxi cab driver permit for Mr. Cryer based on the evidence presented to us today. Um, I think it's in our best interest and well-being of the community to do so. Is there a second? Is there a second, any comments? Call a question, motion carries four zero. Thank you all for the involvement in bringing those four items forward. It takes us to tab twelve, um, our second public comment. Ms. Dance?
Thank you. It takes us to tab thirteen. There are two items we consider under tab thirteen. The first is requires board approval and if they approve the, and I'll bring it forward, the first item forward in a form of a motion, so we approve the reappointment of Bob Wells to the Cobb, Mary DeKalb Seaman Exhibit Hall Authority. Is there a second? Any comments? Call a question, that motion carries four zero. The second item is an announcement, and that is an announcement of the board, of the commission chairman, uh, appointment to the Board of Elections. And I, I'm announcing the appointment of Janice Drisco to the Cobb County Board of Elections and Registrations for the record. It takes us to tab fourteen, uh, commissioners' comments. Mr. Otte?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one announcement, and that is that I will be holding a town hall meeting tonight from seven to eight-thirty at Mount Bethel United Methodist Church Fellowship Hall, and that's located at forty-three eighty-five Lower Russell Road.
Thank you.
I have a few announcements.
No kidding.
But I'll try to be quick. I, I first have a couple of thank yous. I'd like to thank Emmanuel Korean United Methodist Church for hosting their Community Appreciation Dinner last Monday in honor of our Public Safety Precinct Four team. They do this every year, and I was honored to be in attendance. Um, and I'd also like to thank our Cobb Police Chaplains for hosting an inspiring service on the National Day of Prayer last Thursday. We're blessed to have such dedicated and committed men and women as part of our Public Safety Team, and we appreciate and honor their service. For announcements, this Saturday, we have a couple of events going on. First of all, at the Cobb County Animal Shelter, we'll be hosting our Semiannual Forever Fest from ten to four at Al Bishop Road. And this is a event that we do twice a year now at the shelter to ask folks to come out and adopt your new best friend. So come out and join us, I'll be there, um, during the day. Also, this weekend, May sixteenth and seventeenth, at KSU, is the Shaky Boots Festival. Um, and it's a country music concert, a great venue if, if you haven't been to one before. Um, and you can visit shakyboots.com for more information or for tickets. And, um, I'd also like to thank all those that attended the Aging by Design Summit and Expo, um, the Saturday before last at the Galleria. It was a great event, and there's another session coming up in the Community Awareness Series to discuss giving techniques for those caring for loved ones with dementia. On Tuesday, June ninth, at six-thirty PM at the Senior Wellness Center, eleven fifty Powder Springs Street. And for more information, you can visit cobseniors.org. And last but not least, I'd like to, um, announce a five canine race that the Northeast Cobb Business Association is sponsoring to raise money for a new police dog. Um, it's June thirteenth, and it will be, um, a Saturday morning at Piedmont Church. You can visit the website. There'll be a link in my newsletter for more information, or you can email Julie Hale at hail620@bellsouth.net to register to run or to be a sponsor. Thank you.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. Just one announcement, sir. Uh, this weekend, we are at the Cobb County Public Safety Training Facility. Our fire department is hosting, uh, somewhere around eight hundred firemen from across the country and hosting a two-day training seminar. And my understanding is that, that will also, and we talk about travel and tourism, uh, filling up several hundred hotel rooms for that event. And it's an honor that, uh, we're selected and actually hosting, uh, this training facility and world-renowned for our, uh, training facilities and officers, so we're honored to have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, it's firefighters.
That's right.
You said fire, and I'm not gonna repeat what you said.
Warfighter, firefighters.
Firefighters. Um, and in light of the firefight discussion, uh, I want to remind the public that effective May one through September third is our summer open burning ban. I recommend you please go to the website for more information about that as we enter into the summer period. Mr. County Manager, anything further?
No further, Chair.
We are adjourned.